The Fairfield Public Schools Board of Education is called to order. Please rise. I'm actually, so take that back. Rookie, there we go, number one. Present, we have Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale. Mr. Ace will be joining us shortly. Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, and Mr. Peterson. We are joined tonight by the RTM moderator, Mr. Pierce, who's going to be moderating the evening for us. I'm going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge.
............................................................... Before we get started, I just wanted to let you know how the evening is going to run. I am going to be yielding the running of this meeting to the moderator. We're going to stop around nine o'clock just to get, if we're still talking by then, just to get a tenure of the room, to see if we need more time or if we're ready to wrap up. This is a, this town hall meeting was set up a few years ago as a way for the board to engage with the public. It's more of an informal opportunity for reciprocal dialogue back and forth. We invite you to come up, ask a question. Board members will all have an opportunity to answer. You can ask a follow-up question. In terms of timing, we will leave it up to the moderator to either move the discussion And when you please come up for public comment, just write your name and your address on the sign-up sheet there, just so we have a record who has spoken. And with that...
Hey, good evening. I'm Phil Pierce. I'm the RTMs moderator. And there's no formal process to come up and speak, just the first person up will get to speak first. We'll try to limit comment to about three minutes, but I can see that we don't have a lot of people here. So whoever wants to come up first, you're welcome to do so.
So I sign in first?
Yes, sign in first and then state your name and address for the record. You can be seated, too. It's your choice.
Hi, my name's Kevin Buckley. I live on 273 Alden Street. I appreciate the open forum. I have a couple of questions about the, what seems to be a little inequity of the athletic facilities at Ludlow High School versus Ward High School. The scoreboards at Ward seem to be much nicer and utilized more often. The field at Ward, I believe, is brand-new, and I'm not sure about when the last time the turf field was finished. I know I talked to Mr. Schultz about it. I think it has a 10-year lifespan, and we might be on year 12 right now. I'm also concerned about, and these are not grave concerns by any means, but it's just, I'm looking for equity. The weight room seems much smaller and sparser than the Ward facilities seem to be. And I guess I'm just questioning the equity, if in fact it's all, maybe the same amount of money is spent in both facilities. I don't have the figures right in front of me. So I wonder if, in fact, the squeaky wheel gets the, to get greased for the better facilities, or if it's a priority, or I don't know how exactly the funds are distributed. But those are a few of the things that I was concerned about, and I've spoken to several of the football coaches at Ludlow, and they feel that their facilities are inferior when in fact it's supposed to be split down the middle. So I think that's my question for the night. And again, I could be wrong on the inequity, but I'm, that's my concern.
Thank you. Is there a member of the board that would like to respond? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I'm a Ludlow parent. My son graduated a couple of years ago, and I have a daughter who's a junior there, so I know the site very well. First of all, the turf field is not 12-years-old, it's actually two-years-old.
Is that right?
It was just replaced right before Ward's was replaced. So that actually is in great shape, and, because it wasn't for some time. And in terms of the other facilities, I do know that one of the football coaches is also a member of the RTM, and he has reached out to board members and to Dr. Jones, and has been talking to the athletic director about, you know, different issues and concerns that he has. And I guess one thing I would say is that, you know, we have our head of operations oversees all of the district's facilities. And obviously, if we had a blank checkbook, they, all of the facilities would be able to be kept up to perfect condition for, you know, every single year. But difficult decisions have to be made every year. That said, I personally, as a Ludlow parent and as a board member who's been following these issues for a long time, don't think that there is at least any purposeful inequity in terms of, you know, that Ward is always getting more. In fact, I think if you talk to some Ward parents, they would feel very differently. And I know there have been comments made about the weight room, and I know that those comments have been passed along to Tom Cullen, who's head of operations. And he comes to the superintendent every year in the fall with a list of projects that he, you know, wants to try to move forward, that he has worked on with all of the district's staff at all of the schools, including the athletic directors. But the problem is, there's just never enough, that they can all be done in one given year or so. But I know that Dr. Jones and Mr. Cullen are aware of this, as is, as are members of the board. And, you know, so I think that, you know, I don't think it's that Ward's been advocating more, and they have more and better things. I think it's simply a matter of there is just not enough that each school gets everything they want. And sometimes it just has to do with the site and the spaces that are available. But I know that they're aware of it, and I'm sure that when they are able to add things, it won't be everything all at once. It might be one thing each year or every other year. But, you know, I, they're, people are aware of the concerns, and I am sure that they will continue to try to work to make sure that the schools are as equitable as they can be, although not every school is going to have exactly what the other school has.
Right. Mr. Dwyer?
Yes, I'll have to look in a different direction. You should go on our website. Both the town and the school district have a long-range facilities plan. And for us, the projects are scheduled over a 10-year period, and then there's a column for, we'll get to it after 10 years. And it gives a pretty detailed list of the improvements that are needed at each of our 17 schools. And so you'll be able to see what is scheduled for Ludlow in the future and what is scheduled for Ward. I agree with Mrs. Gerber that we try very much to keep the per-pupil expenditure investment in both high schools to be the same. The per-pupil budget that is given to both principals, headmasters, is exactly the same. And sometimes you'll see a difference because one headmaster will say, "This is where I need to invest it," and the other headmaster will want to invest it in a different area. And so sometimes you'll see differences based on the local headmaster's decisions.
Mrs. Gerber?
Just one thing I wanted to add. This is the proposed capital non-recurring projects for 1920 that the board just approved on Tuesday night. And one of those projects is a new tennis court, replacement of the tennis court at Ludlow.
Right.
So, and it was done, the tennis courts were placed at Ward beforehand, so, but it's up now. So, I mean, one thing that people might want to do is advocate with the other town bodies, because now the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM all need to approve this whole, and this is online as well, if you want to take a look at it.
And that was another court I left off when I spoke earlier. But I appreciate the fact that you're here. And it seems to be that the equity is there and the intent, and so I appreciate that. So I just wanted to speak out, as you said, to let people know, and it seems Mr. Cullen and the superintendent know about it and the other bodies, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Kristin Morrison. I'm at 230 Barberry Road in Southport. I just want to follow up a little bit on what Kevin had brought up, on the equality of the school athletic facilities. It's interesting, I did not know about that list, which I would love to go take a look at, you know, the projects that are planned on. Two questions that I do have, one being just the scoreboard at Ludlow. We actually have it, but it's in not-working condition. And I know that Ludlow do have, does have two, I mean, Ward has two new scoreboards. If there's any way we can get it in working condition, it blinks a lot, some things don't work, something like that, not necessarily even replace it, but just to get something repaired sooner rather than later. And then another question I had regarding the scoreboard is, it seems like it's only used for varsity, certain varsity sports. And I was just curious as to why it's not used for a JV or a freshman, even if we could get a student to run it. That was one of my questions that no one has been able to answer for me. So I don't know if anyone has an answer to that question right off.
Anyone from the board?
Yeah.
Well, just a question. Have you reached out to the athletic director?
Yeah, he said, seems to not know. He said it's something to do with the Board of Education, and they, you guys decide when it's used.
Well, I will say, I will say that a lot of times people confuse the Board of Education with the Central Office Administration.
Okay.
And they'll say, "Oh, you know, I'm going over to Board of Ed, meaning this office."
Yeah.
Well, that's not us, obviously, it's the Central Office. So I think there, there sometimes is a little confusion about who is doing what.
Right.
I will say that the Board of Education is not responsible for voting on or deciding when the scoreboard at Ludlow is used.
Okay.
So...
Seems to make sense to me.
That might be something you might want to either follow up with the athletic director, and/or you could, if he still isn't sure, the person who I would contact would be the head of operations at Central Office, who oversees all of the facilities, which is Tom Cullen.
Okay.
And you can find his email on the Board of Ed website, on the Fairfield Public Schools website, I should say, and, and contact him.
Gotcha. We'll do that, we'll do that. Thank you. And then my second question was, Ward seems to have, you know, a lot more land, so it's easier to kind of do projects at Ward, obviously, we don't have very much space at Ludlow. Baseball, Kiwanis Field is where Ludlow plays baseball. Because that's not a school, how is that somehow lumped into the school facilities in terms of being upgraded or fixed up or anything like that? Like, how does that work? Because it's more of town, not necessarily school. Because we don't have a baseball field, so that's it, and we share it with adult youth programs, AAU, and all that, and it seems to get trashed.
Well, I, I believe that it is run by the town.
Right, okay.
So, again, I'm assuming you've asked the athletic director?
That one I have not, no.
Oh.
That just sort of came to me.
So that might be the first place to start, is kind of going through the whole chain of command, would be to ask the athletic director, either ask the baseball coach or the athletic director.
Okay.
You know, who would be the proper person to check up on that and see, you know, if there are concerns about maintenance or concerns about anything specifically going on there?
Okay.
But I believe it would be the town.
Town thing, right.
You know, like Parks and Rec.
The budgets that you were talking about earlier does not include Kiwanis, because it's a town, that's separate from...
Correct.
The education.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
To clarify for both questioners, there are two documents on our website. One is the recurring capital projects, which, right there.
Non-recurring.
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 Which happens annually, and we just pick out different projects that need to be funded by bonding it in that given year. The other document, the long-range facilities plan, is a longer document that is spread over 10 years. So look for both documents to get a full picture of our commitment to capital projects.
Okay, very good.
Mrs. Vitale?
And some of these projects might be smaller, so you may not, if you go to look for them, you may not see them. They might be on just the regular operating budget.
Oh, okay.
So, which is also on the web, which is also on the website. So once the budget comes out in January...
Yep.
I would encourage everybody to go to the budget page and follow the process through, look at what maintenance projects are going to be funded, and as Mrs. Gerber said, definitely reach out to the athletic director, the headmaster at the school, just so they know your concerns.
Okay.
Because it, you know, it starts at the school level and works its way up to us.
Gotcha. Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
And I just wanted to kind of ask, as far as the heating situation in the summer, kind of where that lies in terms of your goals as the board? Because unfortunately, one of my son's first memories of kindergarten is coming home sick because it was so hot. So I just wanted to kind of see where that lies in upcoming discussions you're having.
Comments from the board? Mrs. Leeper?
So, Dr. Jones is working in conjunction with Tom Cullen, who's the director of operations, to put together a proposal for the town. And this is going to take a lot of resources and engineers to go into every school, but to, to figure out how much it would cost to do a project where we were installing Means of Fresh Air and air conditioning in every one of our 17 facilities. And then that project would likely need to be presented to the town as, either to be bonded or up for a vote. Something potentially a little different than what the board has done previously. But we're taking it very seriously as a health and safety issue for our children and our staff. But unfortunately, there's not, that's a bit of a longer-term project, obviously. And in the, in the interim, researching split units for schools that, definitely classrooms where children have medical needs, they have a split unit, but looking at what else the district can be doing to help mitigate, because unfortunately, our climate's getting a little bit hotter, but also our schools are a little tighter than they were when they were originally designed because of other school safety issues. You know, you don't have doors open and windows open like you did in the 1950s or 60s. So classrooms are definitely getting hotter. I wish I had a more immediate fix for you, but that's sort of what the town is, definitely taking it seriously and looking into it. I don't know if anybody wants to...
Further comments from the board? Mr. Peterson?
I'll just add very briefly to that, that other town bodies have also raised this issue. It came up in our discussions with the Board of Finance at the Capital Planning Workshop that they hold in September, fall every year. So it's on a lot of people's minds. It was actually fortunate that, that Board of Finance meeting, if I recall correctly, was right after the Ward High School Open House, which, I'm a Ward parent, that's always kind of a miserable night, to cram that many parents into the building that's not completely air-conditioned, and so it's kind of a, you know, the public getting their, their, a real sense of what the inside of the buildings are like without air conditioning. But it's on, it's on a lot of people's minds.
Any further comments from the board? Okay.
Yeah, specifically, the PT OT rooms should definitely be air-conditioned. Like at Jennings, where my son goes, he gets PT and OT. That room is not air-conditioned. And most of those children have special needs, and to concentrate on physical therapy and occupational therapy and that kind of heat is almost impossible.
Mrs. Leeper?
Is that okay? Listen to him. Have you raised that concern to the school principal?
Yeah, I mean, they're doing their best, but they just don't have enough to...
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion from the board? Mrs. Vitale?
Ms. Leeper did reference that the district is looking into doing a district-wide air conditioning and HVAC upgrade. But for Jennings, there are schools, as part of the long-range facilities plan that Mr. Dwyer referenced, as, we're working air conditioning into every school when they're up for renovation. Jennings unfortunately is one of those schools that has yet to see their renovation. And it's a few years out, but when that school, and I know that doesn't help you, but just in terms of, for the public to know how, we've been, over the years, have been trying to bring each school up in terms of air conditioning, it's usually been done through a renovation project, and we plan for it a few years out. So hopefully, we'll see some change with this new initiative. If not, know that when the renovation comes for your school, there will be upgrades done then.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one separate question, or actually comment. I just wanted to kind of voice my hope that long-term, that ECC would all be in one building. It's what most of the parents want and the teachers. And I just think it would be the best for everyone overall, and I understand in short term that you have to make other arrangements, but just to voice my hope that eventually ECC can all be in one building, and everybody can just be working together, I think would be the best for all the kids and teachers and parents as well, because it's a community that all has to be together in order to work at its highest achievement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
I'm Amity Almond, 544 Silver Spring Road. And I wanted to piggyback on what she was saying about the air conditioning, and essentially say that we're in the same situation as Jennings, where we haven't been renovated, and the school is in rough shape. I mean, really rough shape. So, split, split duct systems are good, but they also caused mold problem earlier this year in Dwight that I'm sure everybody's aware of. And we're having the controls changed this summer. And I understand it's a huge expense to put in the air conditioning, to put in these air handling units, everything. But is there any way that either something could be done in Dwight to make the air cleaner while we're doing that? Or is there any timeline that could be moved up on the renovations of Dwight and other schools that haven't been done?
Comments from the board? Mrs. Gerber?
Unfortunately, in terms of moving other projects up, I would say sadly probably not. And, you know, I'm coming at that from, as a former Osborne Hill parent, where I have watched poor Osborne Hills renovation and their air conditioning get pushed back and back. Now they're sometime after 2027, I think, or something like that. They don't even have a date anymore. So, and part of that was because they had a windows project where they discovered PCBs, and they had to redo the gym and redo the roof. And so a project that was slated to cost a certain amount of money, cost considerably more money and took about five to six years. So unfortunately, when something like that comes up, other things get pushed back. And, and it happens with, in other cases, there are other things that come up that are not on people's radar, and, you know, justifiably so. I mean, they did not know until they started doing all this testing exactly how extensive the PCBs were and that they had impacted the gym to the extent that it had. So when that happens, everything kind of gets shifted. So, and, you know, right now, the schools that are still waiting for these renovations and improvements have been waiting a long time, but it's really hard to say, you know, we have this plan in place, and, you know, it would be really hard to say to, you know, Dwight and Jennings, you know what, Osborne Hill needs to hop ahead of you guys because, you know, of that, you know what I mean? So I think these schools now that are kind of left in line are all ones that all have the same needs. And if we had the ability to be able to do them all at once or do them closer together, I'm sure we would all love to do that, but the fact of the matter is that each one of these projects takes a considerable amount of time. They have building committees that have to be approved, all the town bodies, the initial funding, the full funding. It's a very slow, slow and arduous process. And, you know, I know this isn't the answer you want to hear, and I know it's not the answer that parents at Jennings and Osborne Hill and...
Yeah.
And up until this past year, it wasn't the answer that people at Holland Hill wanted to hear, because they've been waiting long and hard for a really long time, and Sherman. And, you know, I mean, the problem is, we have so many schools, and they all have needs because most of, the majority of our schools were built quite some time ago. So, sorry.
Mrs. Vitale?
I think also, when talking about air conditioning and mechanical Means of Fresh Air, it's not just the air conditioning. You have to upgrade the electrical system. If you're putting in new vent work, you're taking down the ceiling. And very often in older schools, as you start taking apart...
You find things.
You find other things, as Mrs. Gerber referenced with Osborne Hill. So I think wisely, the school district is very hesitant to just say, we're just going to start, you know, rush to do something, thinking that it's only going to be air conditioning, because very often, it ends up being a bigger project. And I'm a Dwight parent, as you well know, so I understand the challenges, and I think that this is going to be part of a larger conversation. We have, you know, a long-term facilities plan, we have a capital waterfall, but, you know, it is, the air quality of our schools, I think, is getting to be a bigger challenge, and I think we're going to have to relook at it, not only for the health and safety of the people in the building, but just the physical building itself, as we saw at Dwight with moisture, in terms of mold building up. It ends up possibly costing more, I think, in the long run.
Well, that's the other thing that I'm thinking, is there are all these patches that keep happening. At what point does it become throwing money at a hole in the ground? And, you know, it's...
And that is not...
It's an unpopular opinion, but if the school's really falling apart, it's falling apart.
And unfortunately, this is not a decision that's made by the non-people that are sitting at this table.
Right.
This is a community discussion for other town bodies.
Okay.
And I would encourage you to, you know, share your concerns with other people that are in-town government, and let them know that this is, you know, this is happening at your school, that you're concerned about it, and, you know, we all know that schools drive property values.
Right.
So if you are a property owner in one of these districts, that maybe their schools are not renovated, that affects you as well.
Yeah.
So, we're going to stay the course right now, but that, you know, doesn't mean that you can't share your concerns with other people, and I encourage you to. Advocate.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add one other thing while you're here, and just as a segue off of your comment that it's an unpopular opinion, and Mrs. Vitale's comment regarding, you know, advocate to those other boards, is that obviously, I'm, we're all eager to hear exactly what Dr. Jones is going to bring to us that Ms. Leeper referenced, too. But once it comes out, whatever, in whatever form, in whatever bidding process to get financial numbers, once this becomes something that we're ready to start advocating for, you talk about an unpopular opinion and the money and what this is going to take, this is going to be a sizable project, and the word I have to attach to it is ambitious. I don't know what form it's going to come in, but it is not going to be business as usual. It's, I can see all, all of the, the status quo, our way of having done projects, we are talking about doing something very different and aggressively dealing with something. And we, in some ways, I think the climate is ripe for that right now. We did have what just happened at Dwight, which was a scare, which fortunately, I believe we have a handle on now. But you look at Westport, Stanford just had a school walkout.
Right.
Greenwich had an elementary school that had to close for a few months and bombed, I'm guessing at this, I think it was at least $2 million immediately had to get sunk into that school to remediate it. So the climate is right for us to come forward with this ambitious, not-how-we-usual-do-things project, and when we do, we are going to need parents on a massive scale to make clear that this is an investment that is important, that is worthwhile, that we're not looking to pit one group in, in-town against another group in-town. This is that important, but it is going to be ambitious. We are going to be looking to be aggressive. That's my take on it at this point. So truly a, stay tuned, but then tune in, and, you know, we need all of our schools and all of our parents really out there on this. I don't know any more than you do exactly what this is going to look like, but once it does come out, we're really going to need the public to say, this is important and it's worth the investment.
Phil?
All right.
Mr. Dwyer?
Just one other comment. When you look at the list that I'm referring to, it adds up to $100 million.
For...
Spread, for the school district, spread over 10-plus years.
Oh, you're talking about all of the upgrades?
Capital improvements.
Mm-hmm.
The town has a wise policy about debt. They don't want to spend more than 10% of their operating budget on principal and interest. Our board has generally supported that principle, and therefore tried to space projects out so that the town doesn't go above that 10% principal. And so even if we had the cash, or could bond the cash, the town would say, that's not wise planning.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Mrs. Gerber?
Just one thing, just to follow up on, we keep talking about the long-range facilities plan, and I don't know if you or any of the other people who've mentioned it are aware. I just want to make it a little easier for you to find it on our website. I just looked it up. So you want to go to the Fairfield Public Schools website, and then you click on Departments, and then you click on Business Services, and you will see there the Capital Non-Recurring Project, this book, this entire thing is up online, so that's for this year's, this coming year's projects. Also, you'll see the 10-year Long-Range Facilities Plan, that's the most updated one, that shows all of the numbers, all of the proposed amounts for each project moving forward over the next 10 years. And there's even, the final page is kind of after 10 years, what is here? And you will see just how incredibly extensive this list is. But it'll give you a sense of the timeline, it'll give you a sense of the costs. Unfortunately, the costs almost always tend to go up, especially with escalation as we get further out. But anyway, that's just there. And then also for the yearly budget, which has some of the smaller projects that Mrs. Vitale referenced, you just go to the Fairfield Public Schools website, click on Board of Education, and click on Budget. And you'll see the past about five years' worth of budgets. So you'll be able to see any projects that were there over the past five years. And then after January 8th, when Dr. Jones presents the 1920 operating budget, that will also be up online.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hi, I'm Joy Ross, 682 Beach Road. So I have a couple of things I wanted to cover. I'll try to keep them brief, Mr. Dwyer. So the first is the prioritization for the budgeting. So we've got a lot of things on our docket. I'm curious what the criteria we're all considering for this as we're moving into budget season. So can you guys share with me how this process works a little bit? I'm still a new parent here. My kid's only in first grade, but there's a lot of needs across the district. So if you could help educate the new parents, that would be helpful.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Well, as I'm sure you can imagine, while we're getting this presentation to us in January, it started months ago. So I'm going to give the very, you know, just the general story of it, and then obviously other people can add in. But, so it will begin with staff members, with leadership administrators, whether it's school, whether it's by department, will be, and everyone will be meeting with Dr. Jones, making the case for, this is the budget for what I need. And again, this starts over the course of the whole fall. So there has been, as you can imagine, what we get in January, there's been an awful lot that has gone into it. And that, while the board has had an opportunity in the fall to weigh in at one meeting just to say, hey, these are some budget things we'd like you to think about, and obviously resonating in all of staff's head are comments we've made since the last budget of January of why wasn't this a factor? But it's all of those department heads that will have made their case to Dr. Jones for the inclusion of this. And obviously, you can imagine probably what that number would have looked like and what undoubtedly then went into paring it down to the number that we're going to get in January. And that's almost always a board question to Dr. Jones. You know, for example, when we're talking about the capital projects that aren't of the size of the non, in the non-recurring, almost every year, we will be asking to Dr. Jones, to Mr. Cullen, what was on the list that didn't make the cut?
Right.
You know, what did you want to do academically that didn't make the cut? What did you want to do in terms of materials, textbooks, et cetera, that didn't make the cut? Because obviously, there's always the possibility that we could say, no, we believe in that, that's important enough, we want it added back in. We rarely do that, but that is part of our conversation.
So can the Board of Ed then get additional means to cover capital investments from other resources, such as the state, the federal government, and then also privately?
A few things with that. I mean, within the budget that we get presented are all of the grant money that the district has access to already and which will have presumed, I mean, and that's, the only money that gets put in there is the money that they are sure of, this is definitely coming to us, sort of money. So it isn't, we're going to apply for this. If an application takes place and is then awarded, that wouldn't be in this budget because she's not going to put money in there in the hopes that we get it, because this needs to be, you know, more definite numbers that we're then talking about to other boards.
So if I understand you correctly, then everything has to be baked in prior to the presentation of the original budget. So we're actually really in arrears in terms of where we actually need to be with this budget with the current meeting that we're at right now.
What do you mean by in arrears?
We have major, I would say, state of emergency needs in the town of Fairfield in regards to the facilities of our school systems, as well as the ECC program. And it's literally busting at the seams and we can't even handle the capacity for next year. And now, we are just now saying to the public, what are our major concerns? We're past that deadline. Am I understanding that correctly?
No. So much of what you've just referenced, for example, is very much, has already been on our radar and is already being addressed. So that the idea of while we don't know the financial number that's attached to it yet, we do know that tentatively right now, the plan is, as a short-term solution, will be to open a second campus for ECC, the building to be finalized yet, of where all of the needs for ECC will be taken care of. However, it is at this point in two different sites, because obviously, as you realize, to say by September of 2019, we're ready to roll out with a single site to address everything that's needed. However, that's the short-term solution. And what we're having a conversation of in the coming months will be, what's the longer-term solution and what, how do we envision that moving forward? But a lot of the concerns that you're addressing as being emergency needs are known, and we're waiting to find out what those will be in the capital portion of the operating budget.
So if I understand you correctly, then the tapping into the state and the federal monies for that is already in that consideration set and will be presented in the upcoming budget?
What's already known, as far as I know, yes.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Mrs. Picko?
The other thing is, we have a five-year district improvement plan. So the Dr. Jones and the central administration will put into the budget where we are in the district improvement plan.
Well, it'd be great, one thing, to push back on those district improvement plans. I know they're five years out. In today's day and age, typically from a corporate perspective, we're revitalizing those plans every single year with some revision process. And I've noticed a lot of the plans online are very outdated. So it would be helpful if there's a five-year plan to make sure there's at least a midway reassessment of things. Because I've noticed with EdTech specifically, it's so outdated already because it was done like three years ago. Technology's changed so much in three years. Like, there's just no way a five-year plan actually works for just that one example. But I know other plans as well just haven't been updated online.
Mrs. Vitale?
The Board of Ed is the school district, as did it myself here in terms of mixing this up. They're looking at upgrading the website. So there are.
Yes, they're in the process of it.
They're in the process of it. And as, as you know, it takes a lot of time. So there is outdated information on there. In terms of the district improvement plan, there is a review process built into the plan when the, when it comes back to the board to review. And the superintendent, at the beginning of every year, reviews the district improvement plan and sets district initiatives for that year. And they're tweaked a little bit. The district improvement plan is still a guide, but it, the initiatives for the year are very much real-time based on what's happening now, which comes to the board, the board discusses it. So it's, it is somewhat of a living document in that it is revisited.
Agreed.
At the beginning of the school year and midway through at budget time. And we're making sure that we're funding those initiatives that are important to us. Technology plan is also, as I'm sure you know, is also being reworked right now. But I do appreciate that if you go to the website and you look at what's there, it can be misleading. And they're working on that.
So I'm switching gears, FEMA. So I'm a Sherman mom, and I have not gotten a clear answer. And maybe one of you does have a clear answer. I don't understand why the Sherman building wasn't knocked down after Sandy. And the response that I really don't understand and I really don't want is, well, because of FEMA. Okay? Because that doesn't make sense to me. Because of FEMA. Okay? Yes, there's money, there's codes, there's a whole lot of things. But why didn't this particular district push for a new building in that particular community at that point in time?
Members of the board? Mr. Dwyer?
You're the history guy here.
So if you two were to say, we're going to meet all FEMA guidelines, the whole building would have to be lifted up.
Yes.
And then once you get involved in that level of renovations, you have to renovate the entire building. And then fundamentally, unless you're willing to spend that amount of money to literally tear the school down and for two or three years, send the students to other schools and then have them come back, that kind of money is not within the capacity of this town to finance. It just isn't.
Okay. So if I understand you correctly, it is a financial decision driven by the town, specifically the town, that they would not invest in reconstruction of that school. So we're putting a whole lot of Band-Aids with a whole lot more money behind the school now. So I'm angry because back when the federal government would have given this town money to actually put that school on stilts, it's not. And every house around us is being pushed up. Every single house. From a financial perspective, homeowners have to raise their houses in order to decrease the cost of living in that area. And it's a disservice to the community as a public building that not only supports the school, but also as a community building. It is not FEMA compliant. And we have bigger issues because of flooding that happens on that field is only going to get worse. Since the 1960s, we have known that flooding happens in this area quite frequently. This is not an area that should be taken lightly in terms of the flooding and the current weather situation, which will only get worse by the year 2020. I suggest we look at this now to look at the entire cost because it's only going to get more expensive. And we're putting an entire building construction site in place, and it doesn't make sense. We're wasting money. We're wasting money. So I'll leave you with that. But financial considerations, I think we need to do a deep dive financial analysis on what it would cost to rebuild that building opposed to what we're currently doing now. And I'm raising this concern now so that by budget season next year, we know that this is an issue. Because the construction's going to go underway next year, and we're going to have kids living through that construction.
Thank you. Mrs. Gerber?
Well, one thing I do just want to touch on, and those who were on the board at the time, you might want to feel free to weigh in. My recollection from 2012, when Sandy was here, was that there was no damage, there was no water in Sherman, internal. So I think that if at that time, after Sandy, the Board of Education and the superintendent at the time had gone to the town bodies and said, we want to tear this school down and rebuild it, it would not have happened. I just, I understand what you're saying, but on the other hand, the fact of the matter was that that school did not have any interior damage in 2012. So I'm not quite sure how we could have justified at that time. It would be a very tough sell, especially considering, you know, the yearly, year-in, year-out costs that we have to put forward to other town bodies.
Did anybody write to the federal government and ask them for that grant to rebuild that school?
I, not to the best of my knowledge. It certainly didn't come to the board. But again, I think the mindset was that there had been no damage to the school, and therefore there was no reason to tear the school down. But I, that's, that's my recollection of what happened six years ago.
Mrs. Vitale?
I was not on the board six years ago, but I do remember not hearing about any damage to Sherman because there was concern that it was, that that school was going to be hit. And my recollection was that it really wasn't, and we were thankful.
So we're going to wait till something happens?
Well, I think that you also need to realize that we have, you've heard from your fellow parents who have children in other schools that don't have air conditioning, that haven't been renovated, that have space, that have space. So if it really came down to it as, from a town perspective and looking at, you know, where your buildings are and where you're going to put your money, and if there's, if disaster hits, and if there's space to send children to another school, I think that if you're being fiscally responsible, that might be a first option. And building a brand-new building in a floodplain may not be the wisest decision if there's other areas to build that maybe you don't have to worry about getting hit by a hurricane. And I don't recall, maybe Mr. Dwyer or Ms. Jacobson, I know you follow some state, in terms of reimbursement for the state for construction projects, how much money we would get for building there as opposed to building somewhere else. I don't know. I thought at the time that that might have been a concern, that we wouldn't have gotten the same level of reimbursement, that the state wouldn't have supported building in a floodplain. Could be wrong about that, just hearsay.
That's a good point.
Mrs. Jacobson?
Hi. Couple of things on all of your comments. I'll start with Sherman. I was there in Sherman, and I personally turned Sherman into a crisis center. And I can speak pretty comfortably at the time, and I might get a little upset because it was a devastating experience for a lot of my friends. Even though Sherman didn't get any damage, I think that the overall sentiment at that time for people who lived through that experience was, thank God, we had that place. That thank God there was a place that our kids had a sense of normalcy, because for many of them, they didn't. So I understand the frustration from the building perspective, but again, I have to reiterate what other colleagues have said, and that there wasn't any damage, and we are dealing with not only federal and state, but other town bodies as all of these issues ultimately come back to. For the town side, I mean, for your funding side that you're talking about in terms of the budgeting process, one of the biggest problems for me personally, frustration-wise, is that the General Assembly passes their budgets after the towns do. So you fundamentally have to guess ahead of time what you're going to get. So if you look at this year's budget, you'll see that under ECS dollars for our schools, we have zero. But that's not the case, because after it was passed, we did get ECS. So it's a difficult balance to try to guesstimate, our administration and this board, what actually the real revenue numbers will be sometimes. But they do their, and we tend to err on the side of caution, because as Jen Max and Cannelli had mentioned, you don't want to count on something you don't know you're going to get and appropriate those funds and then have to pull it back after, right? So you do tend to be a little bit more conservative in that approach. And the town does the same thing in the same way. At least they started to after we started getting funding pulled by the state, right? After the fact. In terms of the revenue sources, Jen was saying, it's in our budget book, what our revenue sources are, whether that be pre-K tuition, whether it be the state funding, whether it be the federal funding, all of those things. But I also think that we've tried to have a conversation more recently, especially with the constitution of the Finance Committee, to start trying to identify additional revenue sources that are outside the box and more creative and less traditional forms of revenue. So I'm hopeful that going forward, that we will keep continuing to try to identify those sources, such as now we're going to have advertising, which has, you know, long been done other well, but we didn't do it here. So now we're going to start doing that in our fields. So things like that, I'm hopeful that this board recognizes the idea that we need to find alternative revenue sources as well to assist with our budgeting. But again, at the end of the day, this does come down to three other town bodies. So as much as people like to come to the Board of Ed, they need to go to the other town bodies, too.
Got it. Great. Okay. So I understand that. Thank you for the due diligence there. I think it's important for the community to understand this as well. And my last plug is how do we get more parents involved? I saw a fantastic rally to get all of you guys in these seats. Like, it was amazing. I was like, politics, what's that? Like, there were people coming out of the woodwork to make sure you guys were in these seats, and this is a great team. So how do we empower the parents to rally behind you? What can we do better to get the support from the community that we need? And I think it's an all-encompassing idea of, let's get the people involved to champion on both sides.
Are you looking for an answer?
Please tell me you've talked about this.
Mrs. Cannelli?
It's, I mean, you're talking, I mean, thus you sense the reaction from the room on that one, because we, it's, you know, there'll be issues that'll come up and we're banging our heads against the wall saying, where are the parents? And, because when they respond, they are magnificent. And even as recently as last year, when we had the Town Hall Forum, which was especially focused on school safety, and, you know, the Chief of Police was there and someone said, what do you consider to be, I can't phrase this question verbatim, but the question posed to him was, what do you consider to be the major liability of the district or the weakness? What is our weakest point? And I remember when the question was asked, my first thought was, dear God, don't answer that. You know, you don't put out to the public what your structural safety weakness is for someone to take advantage of. But his answer was brilliant. His answer was, and again, I can't quote that either, but it was the idea of the attentiveness of the public, that we need people to remain engaged, that just because right now, something awful has happened in Florida at that time. And everyone was on hyped mode and engaged and ready to go to battle for whatever it is that we asked them to go to battle for. And that level of vigilance is very difficult to maintain. And I don't expect it to be maintained. But that was, his comment was, it was exactly that, is that people keeping in touch on these issues, which is a very long-winded way of saying that if I had the answer to that question, I would be, there'd be a lot of people wanting to come and have me talk in other communities, because it is an issue. We don't expect, and that's part of what we're elected to, is we have to maintain the vigilance while citizens are going about their lives. And all we can ask is that people, fine, go about your lives, but once those, when those PTA blasts come out, when Facebook gets, something gets posted on Facebook, when something gets out in the Fairfield Patch, that people pay attention and respond and just please, as much as we can say this, we will continue to say it, please don't wait for somebody else to do the advocacy for what it is that you believe in. Every, you're coming up here today is an invaluable service to so many members of our community, and we don't need you to disengage in someone who hears you. I hope they're not thinking, great, I have someone to fight my fight for me. No, they need to join you. And that's what all of our schools and our townwide and all of these things, is that we just have to keep repeating exactly what you're saying. And so that somebody at some point will recognize, that's an issue I care about, I need to speak up. I can't wait for somebody else to do it for me. We had, you know, the first gentleman came up and referenced the squeaky wheel. Yeah, the squeaky wheel works. And having that voice and being out there in force, it makes a difference. Because that interest in itself is an educational tool so that others will recognize this matters.
Yeah, because we just don't have enough. Yeah, because we just don't have enough money to do it all, unfortunately. So it's going to be really tough, and that's why, you know, I asked about the priorities initially. But to your point, we have to make some tough decisions, so I think everybody knows what they are at this point.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say that the reason we're here tonight is because we're trying to get the community involved. We didn't always have Town Hall meetings. We started having those a few years ago as part of a communications subcommittee that was part of the board to try to get people out, get people engaged, get people involved. So this is relatively new. I would also say that Fair TV is relatively new. Before, when I first started coming to meetings before I was on this board, you had to come to a meeting. Otherwise, you would miss out. You know, you'd read the meeting minutes, which don't always capture the essence of what's discussed. And that was kind of it. Or if something came up in the local paper, then you could read that. So Fair TV has been a great asset in many ways. I think one problem is, though, that the seats here are empty.
Well, it's also a one-way digital medium. Now, we have to, we have two ways, so we should open it up to that, right? So we can have conversations from people who are, you know, online, so we could say, you know, kind of like polling the audience, like, "What do you have to say?" And then have somebody here that is the voice for the people who are on the digital mediums. Because there are parents that are stuck on 95 for two hours and cannot make this time, you know, and traffic is bad, as we all know. So I think we have to reconsider.
Well, people can also email the board at any time.
Yes, so perhaps we can review some of those emails while we're here. Like, what are the top things that came in for the past week? Because that's not being discussed here.
Well, just to be clear, our regular Board of Education meetings, we follow a certain format. We can't have this type of format for every Board of Education meeting, because we do have certain things that we need to accomplish, votes, we need to take policies, budgets, whatnot. So this is one opportunity. Another opportunity is for people to email the board, to contact the board. We also have the PTA visits that are also relatively new, where a member of the board will go to, we try to get, I have been reaching out to PTAs, and I would only say about half of them have replied to me so far, and I've been harassing them since October. So, and a Board of member will come out to a PTA meeting and get feedback from them. I would say this board is actually an incredibly accessible, open board. We answer emails, we respond to people, so, you know, but, you know, we're not going to respond if people don't reach out to us. So I think it's really just encouraging people to reach out to us and understand that we are here to help.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Just, for the sake of completeness, I think it's important to note that it's great that we have the PTAs kind of as a farm system to bring people in and kind of lock in interest on various issues. I think one of the things that I realized when I started knocking on doors while running for this seat is the number of people that are disconnected because they are no longer in the school system. They do not have kids in the, in this, or they have kids that are older, and maybe they're not as involved in their PTAs as they once were, or senior citizens, who, you know, my mother is probably watching me right now. But all of those people, we represent all of those people, not just, not just the parents in the schools. And unfortunately, fortunately, I think most of the, 90% of the feedback we get is from parents in the schools, because they're on the front lines, and they see the issues in the schools. But everybody cares. Everybody cares and is invested and is interested, but it's difficult, there's a large silent population out there that I'm frustrated sometimes that I think we don't hear from. So, really, not to your point, but just in the, in the broad sense that the whole town wants us to succeed and wants the district to do well, and wants the kids to have a fulfilling education. And I would do, there would be a lot that I would be interested in doing to try to pull more people in.
Yes, and it's a great asset, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Please come forward.
Hi, Ann Christine Cochran, 11 Pilgrim Lane. I was just wondering, what is the prioritization for the long-term ECC facility with regards, because you talk about the short-term facility, but it doesn't really seem that short-term based on what the long-term objective is. So I was just wondering if there was any clarity on that.
Anyone from the board? Mrs. Vitale?
I don't have an answer for that right now, because I think that in terms of the long-term, what the long-term goal is going to be and what it's going to look like, we haven't had the discussion yet. And it's going to play, you know, we looked right now at facilities that could handle one location, 150-plus kids, and we haven't found one. As the board starts discussing how we're best going to utilize our existing buildings, I foresee the ECC playing into that. I know that the short-term, defining short-term, quantifying that, hesitant to do that also, just because I think that that also is going to be dependent on the board's conversation of facility utilization and where the best location is. And we haven't had the discussion among the nine of us to really share our thoughts on it. So I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I understand that there is frustration on the uncertainty. I'm hesitant to say, "Well, this year it's going to be here, and then this year it's going to be there," because these are young children, and I, you know, we want a long-term solution, but we also want to make sure that we have stability for the students that are in the system right now.
Mr. Asa?
I just want to say that I actually look forward to this discussion moving in the right direction, because from what I've seen, and from the public, and from the administration, and from the staff, that it seems like this model's working. So trying to continue in that fashion seems like the most responsible thing to do. But we are going to be having some very large facilities discussions, as has been mentioned already tonight, and this is going to come into play. So I think this is not something that's just going to go away. We are going to continue to talk about it, and I look forward to the administration bringing forward their plans for the long term and working that in to our facilities' structure program, whatever that may be, in finding the space and seeing what is the most rational and efficient and best way to move that program forward. So I agree with Mrs. Vitale that there isn't really, well, I'd love to give you one, there isn't really a true answer for that tonight, but I feel like all nine of us are really committed to working on this issue.
Mrs. Caneli?
I don't know if you, were you able to watch our meeting on Tuesday? So you, you're aware that what we had, and not that we charged Dr. Jones with this, but what we were looking for is, can we have the short-term solution, which will be our long-term solution, which is a facility that's big enough to handle this long term? And the answer we got Tuesday night, so this is hot off the presses, is, "No." The places that were looked at for long-term solutions, if they're going to happen, are not options for short term. So we have to have a short-term solution. The ECC cannot properly service, I mean, it's doing incredible, an incredible job at this time. They need the space, we recognize that, so I think we're ready to move forward with something within neon lights, short term, in front of it. And I completely agree with my fellow board members. I don't think any of us is prepared to try to capture what the mood of the board is, because we need to have that discussion. But one thing I appreciated was that, you know, Mrs. Vitale did say definitively, "This is going to be a voting item in January, at that January 8th meeting," in terms of this idea of committing to, "This will be the short-term solution. It's going to allow the public a chance to weigh in on our vision of the short-term solution." Case in point, if a mob of parents came up and said, "We like this, and you should commit to this as your long term," that would be information for us to use. If parents show up and say, "We recognize that you need a short term, we don't like this long term," that's also information that we would have. And then we have to have that discussion. And I think what all of us are yearning for is, we need some answers as well. You know, people need to stop thinking, "Is this a meeting? I have to show up." We need to say, "Okay, it's time for the tough decision," because the status quo isn't working, and the moment you have to deviate from the status quo, it's going to make people uncomfortable, because you have to open new doors and consider new ideas. And we don't know what that is going to be yet. But January kind of is one marker of, "This is short term," but I think we're talking within, by the spring. I'm really, we've committed as a board, our board goal this year, by June of 2019, is to have that answer. So now, I'm not saying that a curveball couldn't get thrown at it, but it's our board goal, that that and a few other facility issues, we're going to commit to a plan. So this spring is definitely, to the point with Ms. Ross before, this spring is a time for parents to stay tuned in, because they're going to be, what we're realizing, we've been looking at a lot of silos of issues, ECC, Walter Fitzgerald, et cetera. We want to have a big macro discussion and solution that takes care of all these moving parts. And, and the more public feedback we have, the better.
Mrs. Vitale?
And this ties into facilities, also back to the air conditioning and the fresh, mechanical means of fresh air. As you know, from one of the criteria of looking for a facility for the ECC, staff wisely wanted to put in a building that has upgraded HVAC systems. So that limits some schools. Some schools are totally out of the running, because they don't have parking, they don't have updated facilities, they don't have air conditioning. As we start looking at our facilities, and if this air conditioning initiative comes into play, that sort of changes the playing field a little bit. So as we've been saying, we just need some answers on some other key issues. So when we make a decision about the long-term solution, it really is a long-term solution. What I would hate to see happen is for us to say, "Okay, here's the long-term solution," and then something happens, and then, "Oh, we have to move you again." I'd rather the short-term solution maybe be a little bit longer than a year, and, and to make sure that we're doing it right, that we're doing it right, and that we find the best long-term home for this facility. And I have a lot of confidence in our staff, because I know how dedicated they are to these children, to making it work right now, short term, to doing the best that they can to making it work. And that's not past, and I don't mean, that doesn't mean to pass the buck, but it's more for a reassurance that it is a change, and I know it can be very scary, but have faith that student, our kids are number one, and we're not going to lose sight of that and making sure that their needs are met, despite these challenges that are posed to us by buildings, really.
Mr. Dwyer?
A little over a decade ago, when the ECC program was created, there were approximately 60 children being served. Today, there's 160. We can't design a one-site solution for 160 kids, because we have to recognize that perhaps a decade from now, it'll be 250. And so I think this board is going to really struggle with the one-site versus two-site question, because we really have to plan for the long term. And the long term is not just the next five years, because when we invest that kind of money in a building, the town expects to get more than five years out of service out of it. So, so this is not going to be an easy decision for this board, because of the enrollment projection and the cost of capital, and the Dwight, the Jennings, the Mill Hill, and various other projects that those parents have been waiting for a long time as well. It's not going to be an easy or pretty decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Please come forward.
I'm a speech-language pathologist at the Early Childhood Center, and I appreciate the forum here, not knowing I had prepared a statement, like you did for the Board of Ed, that, so basically, my question to you would be, if I have to form this in a question, is there any flexibility on the plan that Dr. Jones brought forward? Because when we're looking at how it was presented to us, we first have to acknowledge the tremendous support, your open-mindedness, your listening, the administration listening, taking the parent, staff, and everyone's concerns into consideration when we're making this. But when we're looking to that presentation that was presented, the first red flag for us was bathrooms. You're talking about stall bathrooms, you can't see kids from inside. There was talks about steps in adaptive bathrooms. When we have kids with mobility issues, we have kids that are learning to pee, let's just say, boys in their aim, enough said. The inability to see it, I don't know if you know, I spend a lot of time doing therapy in the bathroom, because if we're doing an intensive product training protocol, we need to be in the bathroom with the child. Some of the concerns, like, the focus seemed to be primarily on classroom space. And as a therapist, we kind of get nervous, because when we talk about the OTPT room being on the second floor, the size of it is very small, the location of it, we look at a space needing to be big enough for multiple therapists, as well as multiple swings, as well as children who need sensory breaks to be in that room at the same time that you have multiple therapists treating other children. There was no discussion about speech. And unlike OT and PT that can share a room, trying to treat a three-year-old and working on language when you have auditory distraction of someone else trying to treat another child in the same room, there was no mention in this plan for any kind of therapy space, unique space for speech. You know, there was a discussion about possibly relocating OTPT. There was no discussion of our collaborative model. We also have psychs and social work that do amazing push-ins to the classroom. We do amazing collaborations, where an OT will come in and push into every classroom and do a session every week. A speech pathologist pushes into every classroom and does a session every week. Psych and social work to a social skills session every week. And this is really enriching our program. Another concern when we're looking at it is the potential unequaleness of the sites. If we are talking about splitting, and we're only talking about leaving the CLC, our most intensive supportive structure, in one setting, do we run the risk of starting this whole panic of segregation, in the sense that if we're talking about mobility challenges, if I have a child in a walker, if I have a child in a wheelchair, if I have a child that's not walking, they're going to have to go to Ward, because it's level and, you know, accessible versus Stratfield, you know? Then do we say, "I don't mean this negatively, and please take it this way, if you go to Ward, your child's much more impacted. If you go to Stratfield, your child has a brighter future." That is our biggest concern that we're selling. If we do not have a continuum of services from the least restrictive environment, which is our ultimate goal, to the most supportive environment of a CLC, what kind of message are we sending to the community? And then we are not setting up two equal sites, you know? That's a significant concern. And when we look at the fact that we're expanding and we're adding new staff, and we're not in one location, it's very hard to get that support that you need and the training that you need if we're all divided. And a biggest concern for us currently is Fairfield's reliance on past practice. And Stratfield was open last year without ever a discussion ever being post-forward about the fact that we were, had outgrown our building years ago, multiple years ago. And I truly, truly understand that it is really critical to focus on next year, what is going to happen next year. But it's really hard for us to get behind these short-term solutions. I totally, totally understand. But when administration was sharing this conversation to us Monday afternoon before the Board of Ed, so that we had some idea, no locations were discussed, but the rubric and all of the information that was shared on Tuesday was shared with us, we got scared, because in that same conversation, the possibility of having three ECCs in the future was brought up, as well as something that is resonating tonight, based on the discussion here, is the possibility of hitting a district-wide air conditioning against creating a unified ECC in the future scares us more. These concepts are very troubling, you know? And then when we look at the proposal for only a 16,000-square-foot site building, you know, if they were to add to Mill Hill, and I know that this is all very preliminary and no final decisions have been made, but again, we get that same site that Mr. Dwyer brought up, is it's very short-sighted. You know, you're looking at the space that we need now, and all the focus has been on classroom space, with no realization of therapy space, nursing space, you know, physical space as well that needs to be done. You know, we're getting mixed messages on the plan being to balance the inequity, because yes, we do not have the ratio of 50-50 that would be optimal. We haven't, because of the class sites. You know, we are to be commended for the outcomes that we're having, despite these incredible caseload sites. I work with some very, very amazing people. You know, so we need to have both things in sight when we're making these plans going forward. When we look at early identification, when we look at medical advances, when we're saving children younger and younger, and we're having more children with disabilities, because technology is affording children more opportunity for a longer, richer life. And we need to help these children reach their maximum potential to be contributing members of the society, you know? And we really feel, I know every building feels that their transition is the hardest, but when you look at the change from a home-based model, where the parent is involved in every aspect, to all of a sudden, "You give me your child at the door, you want me to put my child on the bus, and you want me to have no say, no participation, and no sense of what we're doing." And the impact that many people in many elementaries do not understand of rolling enrollment, the day you turn three is the day you start. We have new kids starting all the time. We have new kids coming into a well-established classroom that has a great routine, and now all of a sudden, one kid is crying, and then the whole room is set off. You know, that perspective in an elementary school, kids make comments, and it's not bullying, it's a natural comment. Do you know what I'm saying? And that inter- know what I'm saying? And that interruption of services, we walk by when a kid has a meltdown in the hallway, we're so used to it, you know, unless the person asks you to jump in and give you a hand. But I've seen it when parents are in meeting and other things, and they're all just like, what's going on? Why are they ignoring? You know, that planned ignorance is not well-understood at times, you know? But all of that factors together. Our concern is if you have one group that's solely preschool and one group that's preschool elementary. And I have to look at this from the kids' interest, and I have to advocate from the kids' interest, that if we are talking about shifting children and shifting classrooms, my personal opinion is that the impact of shifting elementary kids to another elementary school is less than shifting the preschool kids to two different sites. You know, could the board consider one of the buildings that was proposed, such as McKinley, I'm not saying that bad, but it was one of the approved sites that met all of the items of the, a rubric created by administration. This would allow the ECC children and family-based community to remain cohesive and meet the needs of our preschool population, and would also minimize that need for that long-term plan. And I understand that you guys are in between a rock and a hard place, but at the same time, too, I need to advocate for us and for our kids. And splitting us up, I understand is traumatic, but as far as setting us up, and we're unequal as it is, and then we'd be more unequal that you don't have the same continuum of services in both places, you don't have the space for everything in both places. The concept of splitting staff, that was mentioned quite a bit, that the close proximity would allow for continuity of staff, yeah. That adds another component of how much time is missed in transit, how much therapy time, when we look at the fact that we did over 396 PPTs last year, okay? And most of that timing is created based on OT and PT schedule because they're part-time. So it creates a pattern of mistherapy. So if I have the same OT and the same PT that I'm on a team with, with kids, I'm always having my PTs on the same days and times to make that scheduling. Now, when you divide us up and put us in two separate buildings, then you have different people in different locations. The actual logistic, it's a logistical nightmare. I do not know how our administrative staff does it now, let alone how they'll do it going forward. But overall, we're just kind of wondering if there's any kind of flexibility in the board to kind of consider alternate solutions in possibly making a one-step, one-location going forward. Here's your nightmare.
Members of the board? Mrs. Leeper?
I had a statement, I didn't have a question.
I'm just going to say, I don't have any answers, but I share your concerns. And we're thinking really deeply and critically about this, and certainly not taking it lightly. And I think the urgency of the short term is driving right now, but, and I know we keep saying it, and it's easy for it to sound somewhat insincere, but looking really thoroughly and critically at the long term to address, and it's quite likely we might not be able to address every single one of your concerns. And in an ideal world, we would be able to, but definitely taking it very, very seriously. And that's really all I have to say, but I hope you feel heard.
We all feel heard. We feel very supported by both the community and you as well. Someone raised a question with me the other day that kind of just made my heart sink a little more, when we realize that many of you who are incredibly supportive to us are off for reelection next year. So then our hearts start beating even faster. Like, if there is no plan in place, and we lose the support behind us, what happens then?
Mrs. Pico?
I do want to tell you that all nine of us are going to visit Stratfield. I think that you should send that statement and an email to us so that we can look it over, because that was a lot. And even though I may be educated, and a few other members are, there's a lot to think about, even in a short-term solution, what's best for the children. And I want to thank you for coming tonight.
Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. And I'm very glad that we had this town hall before our visit. I, as the one board member, I think, that actually visited Stratfield already, and I shared some of my concerns with Dr. Jones about OTPT. She said at the meeting that they were going to move it. I, if it ends up at that location, we will hold her to that, because that room is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for preschool OTPT. It's too small. You need to have things up. It needs to be adaptable. I'm, you know, I'm speaking to, I agree with you.
Preaching to the choir.
And that was a concern. I think that administration has heard that, and I'm going to trust that they are going to make that adjustment. You bring up other concerns that when we go to visit the space, we'll be looking for where those dedicated spaces are going to be. If you're at the meeting, I raised, I know, having had a child at the ECC, and I looked at the enrollment figures, and I think there were only 75. It's more than doubled since my son was there, still wanting to create a nurturing environment in the elementary school. And I think it might take some creativity, but I think this board is really, you know, it's not our purview to run the school just on that level, but I think that we will continue to advocate for children to really try to make sure that that programming is at both locations. You know, the separate but equal is something that we're striving for, and we do appreciate that. It's hard, given the physical space. It's hard to replicate the ECC, which was built for small, little people, to recreate that space in an elementary school when you've only got six months to do it. I'm going to recognize that, not going to try to, you know, make it sound like it's exactly the same, because everybody knows that it's not, but for the programmatic aspect of it, we're going to advocate for these kids. And I wish, I wish, I wish I could, you know, write the check right now and build the building for you. I really do. And I wish that we had had, we had known earlier. I wish we had more time leading into this, but I can't go back. And I will say, I am up for reelection, but I have a huge amount of faith for those board members and who are on the board, that are going to stay on the board. They are going to continue to advocate. So I think that you should not be afraid about that, that this board and those that are staying are going to advocate for you just as hard as those that may or may not be here.
Mr. Asa?
Yes, what she said. I think, I think this, it's very clear that this board is very supportive of the ECC and its structure. Just a couple things. I will say that prior to me coming onto the board, I had heard about the ECC. I had had a family member that had gone to the ECC. I knew a little bit about it, but I didn't know what it really was. And I would say, I would venture to guess, that the majority of the population of Fairfield has no idea. They may look at it as a pre-K program. Why can't kids just go to a private pre-K, right? They don't realize what's involved, and what it is, and what we do. So I think it's very important, moving forward, as we have these discussions, for more community involvement. And it goes to what was said by previous speakers, how do we get more people involved? And I think it's going to involve a campaign to make sure that we educate and make people aware of what we do. To answer your question about flexibility in a short term, I can only speak for myself, and I can speak for what I have been presented. And what I have been presented, the only solution, short-term, for September, they say September, but it's really the end of August, right?
Yep.
Would mean a redistricting of a school. So it's not, and I don't want to make light of what you're saying, but there's, it's a multi-factor thing. So while it would be great to be able to put all of these students in one, I think we're coming to the realization that in a few months from now, that may not be possible. And it doesn't look like it's been possible, and that's what the proposal is. So piggybacking on what Mrs. Vitale said, I think one thing that this board, I hope, will do is continue to advocate and advocate for the kids in this program. And while it may not be the most ideal for every situation, I hope that we can do the best with what we have. And again, going back to the long-term planning of seeing. But, you know, one thing that I'm fascinated by is the cohesiveness, the community of these families, and the teachers, and the children. And it works, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of it, it's a split-half day, right? So there's not 165 students in there at one time, right?
It's correct, correct. There's multiple models.
Yeah, so.
You have some kids there all day, you have some kids in the morning, some kids in the afternoon, some kids both, and some kids who just come for therapy alone.
Okay. So as this program goes, to Mr. Dwyer's point, as this continues to grow in numbers, which I can only imagine it will, right?
Totally.
Based on past trends over the last 10 years. So thinking long-term, one thing I do think about, and I'm interested to hear feedback from people that really know, and people like yourself that are immersed in this, is as this program grows to 200, 220, 240, 250 people, is a one-site system still going to be the most nurturing and ideal situation? And will it be able to retain that community, and that closeness, and that continuity of care? Or will there just be too many kids that we do need two identical sites with identical staff, so people aren't ping-ponging? And those are questions that I have, that I'd like to learn more about and get input as we continue this discussion. Because I think at the end of the day, my job here at the table is to advocate for all of the students in Fairfield, including these ones that are most at need, right? So taking that all into consideration, as this program grows 10 years from now at 250 people, do we think that's going to be the right model, right? Of course, right now, it seems like it is. But I think that's something that we need to think, and if it is, great. But I think it needs to be part of the discussion, and we include it as we look long-term. But I wish, to answer your question, on the short term, for me, I don't see another solution for September of 19. I wish I did, but I don't. And that's me speaking personally.
Just to briefly address that, we've had people that have worked in different programs in different states. When you are split like that, you never see each other. I mean, I understand that the, the plan for next year is, because we're just down the road, is to share staff. We're waiting to see how that's going to work out. The issue is, when you look at, we focus on developmentally appropriate practice. I'm sorry if my child has a meltdown, we kind of drop everything and address it and help that child through it, and kind of build that self-regulation and that independent skill. So the uniqueness of what we do and our approach is so vastly different than an elementary approach. We have a curriculum to meet, but we don't have tests that we have to make. And if we don't get through it today for this one child, we kind of bring it in at another time. So when we look at that approach, that unique site, and everyone being on that same page, and everyone looking and approaching everything from a developmental, a parent shows up with a crisis that morning, you kind of reprioritize your day and deal with it, that flexibility isn't there often in an academic setting. So people that have worked in both sites have always said, it's like two separate animals, that even a large unified centralized place is often the best. From our personal experience.
Any additional comments from the board? Mrs. Jacobson?
Thanks for coming out and for your great description. I have some follow-up questions myself. I'll be submitting on the presentation that was given last night as myself, so I've thought about that and have some things that I want to clarify with Dr. Jones. Just a couple things on what you said. When you're saying shared staff, you don't mean the teach, classroom teachers, you're talking about the therapists?
They're talking about sharing support therapists, so OTs, PTs, speech.
Is that happening right now?
There are currently six full-time SLPs and one part-time, so there's seven SLPs at the preschool alone.
At ward?
At ward.
Uh-huh.
There are three OTs and three PTs. Now, the OTs and PTs are shared through the district. They're at different sites, different days. So some are there in the morning, some are there in the afternoon. So the plan is very vague, so I can't answer that, because...
That's happening right now, isn't it? Because there's already two.
We're unique. In all honesty, no, Stratfield is kind of its own little animal, in the sense that there are no speech that go over. They're done by the speech pathologists that are at Stratfield. The OTs and PTs that work at Stratfield, some are the same that we have at ECC that are working there. There was a comment after last year that they weren't getting the collabs like we're getting, so there are some support of our psych and social worker with the district, the building at Stratfield, to build their capacity to provide that. So no, there's not the exchange of therapists, there's not the exchange of teachers, there's not the unique collaboration that they're looking to put in place for next year, so what that model looks like.
So just to piggyback on some of my other colleagues, I think that this is definitely, the full board is on board and hearing all this input from different stakeholders. We've definitely gotten a lot of parent emails and feedback and staff emails, so it's definitely, I think everyone knows that we have, this is weighing on everyone's mind and is very concerned about it, and coming to the best solution possible. I'd share Mr. Asa and Mrs. Vitale's commentary that this is part of a, our ongoing facilities discussions, that we're going to be having a broader scale in general going forward in terms of long-term. But also, as Mr. Asa said, for next year, there would be, you'd have to displace half of an elementary school next year doing that. So you can understand the complexity of that kind of a solution, and where they would go in order to do that for next year. So going forward, I think that we're going to definitely have to make some tough decisions about, do we want to stick to the one, one school, I mean, the one facility for the long term, or not? So I look forward to the ongoing input, questions, clarifications, and how things are going this year, or last year, actually, this year. And for the short term, when we get to having to make those decisions, how is it actually going with these two sites as it is? And what have been the outcomes, and et cetera? So it'll be interesting to follow what happens as we make those decisions.
Mrs. Pico?
So just, I'm trying to get a clear, realistic idea of the staff at the ECC. How many special ed teachers are there? Classroom teachers?
Six.
Six. How many speech-language pathologists?
6.2.
OTPT?
Three and three, six.
One nurse?
One nurse.
Two receptionists?
Two psychologists, one social worker, numerous paras. Each classroom has two paras, and the CLC, each individual child has a para. We have one administrative assistant and one clerical. And let me tell you, it's not enough, but that's my personal opinion.
Well, because essentially, every child in that building has to have a PPT, and meetings, and...
And they are also currently scheduling and doing the work of the children currently at Stratfield as well.
So for us to now open a second program at Stratfield, we're going to move the pre-K from Burr, so that staff, into Stratfield, we're going to have to hire significant staff to basically make another model of this, because the staff that's already at Stratfield is busy with those children.
Correct. This is, we do not know how it works. We do not know the plan, because when we're talking about staff, the focus is on relieving the load and moving some of our students out of ECC and into Stratfield. So that, in theory, would free up some of us. Yes, it's all esoteric right now.
My understanding from Tuesday's meeting was the idea to bring in more atypical peers, not necessarily to reduce the amount of students that are being serviced, or...
It was to make them more equitable by distributing them across more classrooms.
Mrs. Leeper?
I just want to also highlight, the conversation that we had on Tuesday was really around facility utilization. And the programmatic piece is very serious and very important, and in my opinion, still yet to come. So I think there's like two buckets of issues. One is the space, and then maybe even more important, the programmatic piece, but we haven't yet, as a board, started to have that, that conversation. So I hope that Tuesday's conversation isn't misconstrued to be the full picture of what the short term of the ECC looks like. And I just wanted to, to throw that nuance in there.
We recognize that, and we truly appreciate being heard.
Thank you. Oh, Mrs. Vitale?
And in terms, well, we're not educators also. We are board members. We, we don't necessarily have the expertise, so I hope you understand that we do have to trust staff recommendations also. I mean, a number of us have personal experience as parents, and it's very hard to kind of separate the two. So just appreciate you just keeping that in mind as we make our decisions.
We recognize that.
So we're going to be looking for more, we're not losing track of it, looking for more guidance from administration.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Joy Ross, 6A2B Road. So in terms of the ECC and the financial discussions, I mean, this really does tie in, guys. We have to think of the programmatic aspect of it and the facilities, but there's a third aspect, Jen, that wasn't discussed. And that's the long-term management process of every single child going through the ECC and every single school in this district. and every single school in this district. So, initially, when the consultant came in and he gave that data, that is extremely important data that must be considered through this process now. That is the model of the ECC, is not just facilities. It's a program, and it's a lifelong program. There are 504 laws around children with disabilities till they're 18 years old. That program today, in this system, sucks. Every single year, I have to advocate for my son at ground zero, at the beginning of the year, every single year, based on how this program currently works today. That's not acceptable. You're going to have major issues when 200 special ed kids get to high school level, if they're not tracked all the way through. That's a high volume of students with special needs that need a holistic program to be thought through now, because it's going to impact our school system over the next five to 10 years. So, just think about how we can divide that up, think about that, and put that as criteria in terms of this budget.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Okay. Sir, I see you in the back. You've been very patient. Do you want to come forward and make a comment?
Frank Sahigian, 20 Chelsea Street. First, I'd like to thank you guys for doing this town hall. I mean, it's really terrific opportunity for us, and really appreciate the amount of time you folks put in, you know? It really is over and above, so it's very much appreciated. And I'd also like to commend you for the way in which you conduct yourselves as a board. It's been very impressive. It's one of the best boards I've seen in the years that I've been here. And in particular, shout-out to Mr. Dwyer, as he steps down, has conducted himself over the years with tremendous dignity and professionalism and much appreciated. So, I'd like to start there. Notwithstanding all the, you know, the respect that you show, notwithstanding the way you cut me off within strict adherence to three minutes, so I'm going to be trying to watch next time to see.
I did give you extra time.
No, you did.
I did, I absolutely did.
I got to find this, I got to find the clock. I don't know who has the clock. Okay, I want to find out who has the clock next time. So, I'd like to address my comments while wearing two hats. First one is as a citizen taxpayer, and the second one is a teacher. So, as a taxpayer, I had the opportunity to watch on Tuesday. I wasn't here on Tuesday night, and I watched the comments on the board goal discussions, which was both enlightening and, to be honest, at first was a little alarming. I'm happy to see where you folks ended up, but it was a little frightening there, to be honest with you, where you started. Just want to make sure I've gotten this, got this correct, and we all have this correct, where we ended up. We're not going to get the cash register going, open up with Malona McBroom right now, right? That cash register is closed, I believe, because they would not have a clear and specific charge as to what to do anyway. We can't be looking at all these interrelated issues that have been come up, one of which is ECC, a lot of talk tonight, but as we all know, ECC, racial imbalance, 504 expansion at Mill Hill, magnet pre-K, all those things are silos that we've been, you've been talking about. You said we have to look at this as a comprehensive redistricting plan, and that there will be a special meeting of the board that you guys will meet. If I understand this correctly, is that in maybe late February, or is it sooner? Late February, where you folks will meet behind closed doors and kind of kick these things around more on, you know?
Closed doors and open?
Open door. That'll be the open door?
It'll be a public meeting. We're still sort of working out the date and what the format will be. We want to be responsive to the public and include you, but we also want to make sure we're complying with our bylaws in terms of what type of meeting we can have and...
And the goal there is to walk out of there with a plan that you could give to Malona McBroom. Is that correct, at that time, or not?
I don't know. Well, I'll have to see where we are. Excuse me for not being recognized, Mr. Moderator. See where we are with some of these silos. Mill Hill being one of them. We need to know how big that school is going to be.
So, you have to be, you have to be determined whether or not you will be able to go to Malona McBroom at that time? Is that, is that right? Am I getting, am I understanding that correctly now?
Mr. Asa?
I would say that it was clear after the last meeting that we want to have at least a meeting, but it most likely could be two of these special meetings. But our end goal is to get to where you're talking about.
Okay.
But we're not sure if we can accomplish it all in one meeting. This is going to be a big
Right.
can to open and chew on.
Right.
But that is our goal.
And that there will be opportunity for public comment and input before we go forward there. And just to point one last thing out about the redistrict, because we'll save my comments later, but a comprehensive redistricting plan also needs to consider the high schools, needs to consider where, you know, how we feed the high schools and a conversation about that. You know, I lived through the last one, and the last redistricting plan that we had turned out to be a Rubik, or the plan that what we ultimately came up with was a Rubik's Cube. Why? Because we had so many parameters that we tried to meet, and some of them just got us into that position where we are busing kids from Tomlinson to, excuse me, from Stratfield to Tomlinson. And the reasons for that are, you know, many of the parameters were very positive, you know, things like Holland Hill and McKinley, socioeconomic reasons, we had expansion at Woods at the time, so we had four, four, and three, you know, in terms, and then we didn't want to have a Singleton. All makes a lot of sense. We've been living in this town now. I've been here for 30-odd years, going through two high schools, one high school. And the elementary school decision to drive the high school deserves a lot of conversation with the public and a lot of conversation before we even go out with really a comprehensive redistricting plan. That falls into the, it falls into the pot. I mean, I would love to know. I've been here a long time, and I've only been teaching now for nine years, and, you know, back then, as my old life, I never even knew how many, admittedly, I didn't know how many schools we had. But how do we, how did we, does anybody know how we ended up with the, with the picture that we have right now, with like the bow tie at, I call it the bow tie at Jennings? Does anybody?
Butterfly.
The butterfly, okay.
Mrs. Gerber?
How, does anybody know? Does anybody, oh, sorry. Does anybody know how we ended up with the borders that we have?
Where to begin?
Well, it's...
Somebody might know, but we may not want to say.
Okay. I mean, I really think you can give this to, frankly, I know we all spend all this money on consultants. I think you could give this to a seventh-grade geography class with the 11 schools and have them draw the lines, you know, and really probably have as little disruption, as much or disruption as you're probably going to get by spending $30,000 to go to a consultant to figure this out. You know, I really think you could probably do that. So, just to throw that out there, but we'll save that for another day. So, lastly, on the taxpayer side, and I know this racial imbalance thing is a big one, obviously, right? I don't understand why we cannot go hire a good lawyer, okay? Go to the, go to the state, and if we're going to be pushed to make decisions about racial imbalance, and I know we've been pushed for this a long time, but you know, we are a unique district. How many districts have two high schools, one high school, two high schools? Not too many. Matter of fact, I probably would argue there's probably not a one in the state that has done what we have had to do, and we've done correctly, actually, if you looked at the history and when we made the changes. We did it right. We did it when we had to do it. So, we're in such a situation right now with such volatile enrollment, questionable enrollment, all the issues that we're talking about. I don't understand why we couldn't go, why we feel pressured to make that decision about racial imbalance so quickly, so quickly. Why we can't figure that into the comprehensive redistricting plan? So, just, I'll throw that out there for comment.
Comments from members? Mrs. Cannelli?
I guess I'm unclear, and what is it that you think we're doing quickly? And I say this as the person who was...
That's true.
In 2005, I was one of the original members of the Cultural Diversity Task Force, right through to where we were closed out at our last Board of Ed meeting. So, I'm not, and I, and, okay, laughs aside, genuinely, what is it that you feel that we are doing quickly?
Well, if there was going to be some changes to redistricting, pocket redistricting, or any kind of redistricting that was going to solve the racial imbalance program.
And what I would say to that is that that is precisely what we have avoided.
Okay.
That we have time and time again had the opportunity presented to us, had the chance to advocate for, let's do a pocket redistricting, solve this and not do, and what we have, and certainly the existing nine, it's the only thing I've ever heard any of us say, time and time again, is we are holding off on that until it is part of a comprehensive redistricting. And quite frankly, and this is my personal stance, it is in no way the primary driving force now behind the redistricting conversation we're having.
That's great.
To me, right now, the driving force is, in particular, facility utilization.
Absolutely. And that's what it'd be.
That racial imbalance might come into that conversation. I'm not, I certainly wouldn't say it won't, but it is not what's driving it for me, and I don't think, I think that's exactly, precisely what we have been holding off on, was we're not going to do something, fidget a few children here, there, very much disrupt lives, and then have to do it again when we realize we actually have a bigger, larger facility issue district-wide, so...
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Pico?
Just to reiterate what Mrs. Max and Cannelli are saying, I'm going into my fourth year on the board, and I can tell you that when I joined, we are a very different board in a lot of ways. I never imagined then we would even be having a conversation of redistricting. But we have been doing our job so well to try to meet the needs in the district, we've just gotten to a point where there are so many needs with our facilities.
Understood. I'm sorry.
Mr. Asa?
To your point on hiring a lawyer, I don't necessarily think that that would be a wise thing to do. However, if we get to the point where the state comes to us and tries to mandate something that a majority of the board feels is unconstitutional or unfair, then at that point, I think the discussion might happen of defending us. But the way the statute is, is, I don't think it would be a relatively good move or a proactive approach to go after the state when they're not really coming after us at this point.
Totally agree. And if that should happen, though, that's just something, because I think we're in a very unique situation.
Well, I don't think we have a problem. I think we don't meet the state regulation
Right.
in the way it was written a long time ago that needs to be amended, but we really know it won't, because not enough legislatures in this state have the problem. So, why are state legislators going to go and lobby and bring a bill to change legislation that doesn't affect their constituents? So, we have an uphill battle in that aspect, because we're only a small, tiny population of the state town-wise that has a quote "problem." If I thought we had an actual problem, and I thought we had people that were crying economic isolation and crying issues of discrimination and segregation, then I would have a different stance.
Right.
But we don't.
Great. Awesome. Other question on, before I get off my taxpayer hat. The numbers that we're going to be budgeting now, and I'm just curious, do we, do you know whether or not the enrollment numbers we're going to be using are the same ones that Malona McBroom has given us in the past, or do we not know that, or from the last projections?
Mr. Dwyer?
Our practice has been that we ask our demographic consultant, Malone McBroom, to give us an annual update so that we use the most recent, we don't get a 10-year update, we just get an update on what does next year look like. And they've been asked to do that. I'm sure they've delivered that to the district, and then that is the number that we use to budget the next year's budget.
So, if I looked at the last one, it'll be, it'll change. It'll change from the last ones that they gave us.
I'm going to say it'll change, not dramatically. Because they don't change dramatically year to year, but we do experience suddenly a year where there's more kindergarteners than we expected, or more high school kids than we expected.
Well, to that point, you know, the budget that was, that we had this year used the numbers in Malona McBroom. And thank you, by the way, for publishing the numbers monthly, which is awesome. I think that's terrific that we can see that as a community. And by the way, the way you publish everything was really fabulous. I mean, there's so much visibility in this district. It's so impressive and appreciated. But if you looked at those November numbers, and you looked at the elementary numbers, and you compared the K through three numbers to what Malona McBroom projected, they are 10% off on the low side, okay? I mean, the kindergarten numbers were 622, came in considerably lower than what they projected. First grade, same thing, from what I saw. So, just to throw that out, it's about 10% lower, which is, at least if I was looking at the correct numbers. So, the November numbers still show a declining enrollment. If I remember right, Malona McBroom predicted this was the bottom of the, the 10th, next year would be the beginning of the uptick. That's what was projected. If I remember my numbers correctly, but maybe I'm wrong. Yes?
Mrs. Jacobson?
A little off.
Okay.
So, overall, they were only off by about, I think, 19 students for the whole continuum.
For K to 12?
Yes.
High school numbers were up higher?
Right. So, the high school numbers were higher by 85, and the elementary were lower by 66.
Right, which is what we've been experiencing, a declining enrollment in the elementary numbers, so that's considered.
Right, so, I mean, they were off by 19. So, in terms of budgetary numbers, you know?
Well, facility-wise, I'm really coming from a facility standpoint, too.
Facilities-wise.
That's really, so...
And the bottom, I believe, is more around the 2023, 24 area of where the bottom is before it starts to come out. So, around there. So, it's not right now. It's still on the elementary, on the downside, projected anyway. We'll see, but then in a few years, it's...
We have two schools now, two elementary schools with below 300 students in it. Jennings and Dwight.
Yes.
We have an average, an elementary of 386 students. Compare that to most other areas around here, and we're probably 100 students lower per school than most other places. Now, you really can't, you know, coming from my old business background, running two high schools, it costs a lot more money to run two high schools than one high school. The more high school, the more schools you run, that definitely there's some, you know, more, there's not cost, not to say they go at that, but it just points out, we have a lot of schools for our average per size. You know, if you looked at Westport, you looked at Darien, Greenwich would probably be the only one comparable, but Greenwich has twice the amount of, you know, area to cover. So, I mean, I believe in elementary schools, but you know, we're 30 square miles or 60, something like that. So, it's considerably different. So, you know, we have very small, comparatively speaking, to other, to other schools, districts. You should look at that, there, I've looked at that. It's, we're about 100 students lower per school, per average. So, just from a facility standpoint to think about.
There's also the educational component to think about.
Mr. Asa?
So, how, just out of curiosity, so, that goes along with our past history of how we've had community schools and we've had smaller schools. So, in order to accomplish, just let me get this straight, what you're talking about would be making other schools bigger, because where are you going to take all these students? So, what you're talking about is a capital project expenditure that...
Maybe, maybe not. Depends on what the number, will help, whether or not the numbers truly, you know, start to come up, right? I mean, that also has, rebuilding Mill Hill to 504, you know, you mean...
But you're saying building schools to 6, 700?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I mean, well...
Well?
I'm not saying, I mean, maybe, to your, I'm not going to, I can't, I don't have here to say it all to solve this. I mean, my God, we just talked about perhaps even moving ECC to a particular school. So, I mean, there's, these are much bigger things that I'm saying. I'm just making an observation in terms of the average.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if that was what you were saying, to have less schools but bigger schools.
Just pointing out that it does, you know, it does, it does actually put a financial strain on you when you have more, more schools, right? More physical buildings.
Well, I mean, that's, that's math, but...
Anyway, so, just to point out, we are, we have a lot of small schools, comparative.
Mr. Dwyer?
This is not the first time you have suggested that we could deal with only 10 elementary schools, correct?
Well, it depends on where the numbers are going. That's true. Well, it depends on where the numbers are going, that's true. By the way, by the way, if you believe the numbers, that what they're saying, I say, I would totally rescind that.
Yeah.
Totally rescind that, because I just thought the direction, I'd love to see, I'd like to see that trough. I'd like to see that trough, that kindergarten number, you know, we're looking at, what, 800 and something kids in eighth grade, and we're down to 622 in, 622 in elementary, in kindergarten right now? Is that the right number? 622? And what's the number in eighth grade, seventh grade? 800 and something?
Eight ninety-three percent.
I mean, you know, there's, that's a steady, there's a steady decline, what's the, you know, there's a steady decline from fifth grade, fourth grade, to third grade, to second grade, to first grade, to kindergarten. I mean, I know Malone McBrune said this is the bottom, and it's going to go up, so just to your point, Mr. Dwyer, yes, it, I would totally rescind that and go to keep it 11, keep it there if they are right.
Having my oldest, who I'm afraid to say has just turned 40, I'm too young to have a 40-year-old, but nonetheless, just turned 40, the last deep trough he was in. And this school district and other school districts closed a number of elementary schools only to reopen.
Reopen, yeah, I got it.
This board, one of the first meetings of this new board last fall, was addressing, should we close an elementary school? And after discussion said, based on looking at the long-term trend, we have no doubt that although we may think we're in the valley now, and the peak will never come again, it will, and that we should keep the 11 schools. So if you want to say that ship has sailed, we would have to stay in that trough well past the projection time for, I think personally, for this board to reopen the question of we can deal with only 10 elementary schools.
I, from having seen what they presented, and I think we, if we're going to go with it, I would agree with you. I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that at all. Okay, enough about my, enough, I'd like to get to the teacher's side, okay?
Sir, just before you move on to the teacher's side, I just want to see if anyone else wants, from the public, wants to speak, because we have one other. You've had the floor for about 20 minutes, so if you could very briefly-
Briefly on the teacher's side, okay. You heard from the headmasters of Mr. Cummings on alumni survey just this week, which I was, had the opportunity to watch as well. And when Mr. Cummings was asked about, you know, what are we doing with this information? And, and he pointed out how, you know, we've done a lot of writing of curriculum of late, and then went to, he pointed out to, rightfully so, that more attention to be paid to improvement in classroom instruction and intervention is where he went next, which I thought was really interesting. Because I had done a survey myself within my, my school. Prior to actually seeing that, and I wasn't thinking about whether or not I'd even share it, only to clear my own head as to what I'm seeing as a teacher, and you know, so you're hearing things about alumni, and I would like to share some things with what other teachers are saying, which I think had probably come from all the other schools as well. Okay, the questions I asked them, because something I was experiencing, and I wanted to know if I was alone, or what other, other things. I asked, compare your students of the past few years to those you taught 10 to 15 years ago. By the way, I only spoke to teachers 10 to 20, 10 years of experience or more in Fairfield, because I wanted to get. And I'm now in my ninth year, so I'm no longer a rookie, and so I feel like I have some experience to kind of look back. And I said, comparing them, which of the following would you say is the most accurate with respect to their academic performance? And I gave them three choices. They're either more capable than they were back then, less, or the same. Not one said they were more capable, while 15 said they were less capable, and six said the same. Struggling learners, I was interested in hearing about, number of struggling learners in your class of late. 18 of the 21 said we have more than we had before. The organizational structure, whether or not it's helping us to meet these needs, none, various few said it is helping us. And the last question about parental involvement. Just some brief comments about what they said as well. It's about the grade, not always about core learning today. Expectations from us have become more demanding. Schools and teachers are working harder on a conglomerate of many more issues, including home, mental health issues. The work ethic on the part of the students has worsened. Curricula has become more demanding, which is not developmentally age-appropriate, and I would say that is true as well, something I've experienced, one of the reasons why I wanted to do this. I feel, as a teacher, and I know we have two teachers on the board, I feel this rigor that we've been developing in the curricula is going this way, and the kids too come to us less prepared to meet it. So that's my experience, and it's one of the reasons why I threw that out there, to see whether or not I was alone. And then there were other things, I know, because I've already had so many times, so many more students with IEPs and 504s, specialized education's much more complex today than it was, which leads also to the special education piece that I would like to comment on, that I was cut off on the last time. We spend money on these audits, and these audits, you know, when you're, when you go to a consultant, and when you have people, we go to a consultant, why? Because we know we have a problem in special education. We're not alone, and we have a problem, and we have a lot of people who are struggling in special education, so we go to an audit. And so, you know, the special educators will go, oh, that's great, we're going to try to fix this problem. And then they come back with something that goes, well, here's how you compare to this so-and-so, and, you know, with DRGs, that's what we get back, we get just a bunch of data back. We don't get anything, like concretely, that, or at least if we do, they don't know about it, nor do I, as to what they're suggesting that we do. So it's, when you go to consultants when you have a problem, and they don't come back with something that the people, the stakeholders feel as though we're going to make some real progress, you actually defeat the purpose. It actually makes them more frustrated, and more angry, and more, more frustrated. Well, let's leave it at that. I mean, that's what happens. If you don't feel like you're getting, just to have this data, which is basically what we have, was a data dump, DRGA, here's how you compare, really nothing concretely that says this is how we're going to fix it. And one of the reasons why we're doing it is because, you know what, these, their, their jobs in this, I was on the negotiating committee for the contract, and special education came up a lot about trying to define their job, because it's very difficult, you know? A contract, I can only have 120 students. What do we do with special educators? Can't define it, it's very hard, case loads. You know what, doesn't do it. Your teachers know, you know, you have one kid who's going to be like five kids, I mean, that's not going to be the way it does, that's not the way it works, but how do we define it? And we're going to lose special educators in this district, and they're hard to come by, and this audit did not help us. So I threw a lot out there in terms of struggling learners, really what I'm experiencing, what we're experiencing in the classroom as relates to curricula, and I even tied it to what Mr. Peterson was saying the other day, by the way, in terms, I really appreciated you sharing that 60 Minutes thing about where students are, you know, memory retention. We really talk about, these kids are not, what's going on? Something's up here. You know, their, their study skills, their spelling basics things are not what they were. And I've only been doing this for 10 years, but I was curious, and I didn't want to hear from the ones who've been doing it 30. I wanted to hear from the ones who've been doing it like 10 to 20 years. What are you experiencing? So I just wanted you to hear that dovetailing what you heard about the alumni, talking about their experiences, which again, which you rightfully pointed out, well, you're hearing from, you know, you're hearing from the AP students and the honor students, but you're not hearing from, like, most of the students. And you need to know, you should know what's going on in the classroom, as Mr. Cummings said, you know, improving, continuous improvement in classroom instruction. I got to tell you, it's getting much harder, and I've only been doing it for 10 years, but it's getting harder and harder, is what I would say. So just to throw that out, so.
Mrs. Pico?
So this is my 12th or 13th year of teaching, it depends if you count my DSAP year. I can tell you that it is very different from when I started teaching, and that I believe RISEP gives a presentation about 22 different assets, and one of the things they present to us every year is, you know, it's really important for a student to have 22 assets to be successful in the classroom, and that every year, students are coming with less and less of those assets. You know, having somebody at home that helps them out with their homework. I don't actually remember all 22 off the top of my head, but it's always eye-opening every year, and I've worked at three different districts now. I think there are a lot of demands on all teachers, and that what we are teaching now is for jobs that don't even exist. That we are trying to teach to children who are consumed by electronic devices, and we as teachers have to change to meet their new needs. It's not an easy job, it's probably why a lot of people are leaving the profession.
Other comments from the board? Mrs. Vitale?
Just in terms of special ed audit, I am hoping that we are going to get the follow-up. We had the presentation. I don't view that as the endpoint in terms of what the school district is going to do with that information, that data. And I think over the next, upcoming months, especially going into the budget, we might be seeing, you know, how that audit is affecting decision-making. Again, I can't speak for staff, you know, we, we don't make those decisions, but I would be hesitant to say that we got the data, and then we're done with it. I think that might be premature to make that assumption. And I want to apologize when I say that we're not educators, sorry, Ms. Max and Cannelli, Ms. Pico, I was just talking about it in this capacity.
Other comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Juakel?
Hi there, Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I just want to thank the board as a current and new ECC parent. It's been incredibly relieving to see your support and the staff and parents come out. There were a few things, obviously, the short-term plan seems to be what's going to be the plan for the fall, so I'm happy to hear that programming is being separated a bit from that. There were a few things at the last meeting that perked my ears as a parent, and basically was, is the goal to be setting up a second campus, or is it to be acclimating to the Stratfield School? We heard things like there's one nurse, there's one playground, we heard some things like, you know, fifth graders bringing in kids. As a parent of a three-year-old with special needs, that flipped me out a little bit. So just to be aware of what the ultimate goal is, just of the short term as well, and then what the long-term goal is. So that's a quick one. And then a squeaky wheel problem. As a parent in North Stratfields, we've kind of been banging our heads in the wall for our walker community, and just the safety concerns of drivers on those back roads. I know many of you can probably relate, you buy a house, and it's a quiet neighborhood, and between the hours of 8:45 and 9:15, it's just not. And we've contacted our safety officer, our principal, and everyone is lovely, but they're all kind of pointing us in the opposite direction with no real solutions on what the townwide policy is for how to keep our walkers safe. There's really no, I've kind of driven around to other districts, seems like some have sidewalks down by the beach in Sherman, some, but by Burr, obviously, do not. We don't, we don't have lines on our streets, so there's real no definition of where our walkers are supposed to go, so a lot of us just drive. And I think it really does a disservice to a lot of parents, like, that there isn't an equality across the town of what a walker looks like, and how we're keeping our walker safe. We don't have crossing guards at North Stratfield. I know Riverfield does. We don't have lines on both streets that access our school, I know that other schools do. So I'm curious what the board's opinion is on a townwide safety policy for walkers, not just who gets a bus, I guess is the question.
Comments from the board? Mr. Dwyer?
In your conversations, I assume people have told you about the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Okay. And so a parent first should read the policy around walking and transportation, and then appeal to that committee for a specific issue, whatever the issue is for that child.
Yep.
And then the police and the fire and various town officials, including a member of this board, sit and listen and go out and look at the site in particular.
Yep.
We do have a significant number of walkers, and we did have a practice of busing, buses perhaps stopping to pick up walkers, which has, is no longer in practice, because the cost of transportation started outstripping what was in the budget.
Absolutely.
And that is, I think, what has created, if you will, some of the issues around transportation safety. The roads belong to the town, and where there are lines, that's because the town has put lines in for bike paths and whatnot. And so I presume you've also been advised to talk to the town relative to whether you can have those bike paths put in roads as well, because it's not just a Board of Education issue, it's also the town side.
We have.
Other comments? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, with crossing guards, that's through the police department, so I don't know if you haven't contacted them about-
We've only contacted our safety officer, so we might need to go to the-
Right. You might even want to go to the police website to see, they may have something there about crossing guards, but that's just one thing, just that one specific issue. We were 10-year walkers at Osborne Hill, so I, I feel people's pain. And I will say, another issue I think that definitely comes up, that was always kind of, I had, it was like a pet peeve of mine, was that you do have a tremendous amount, number of parents who drive their children who should, or could be taking the bus, so you're going to have even that much more congestion, which can-
Okay, our worst violators are our own parents, and we're on our PTA constantly shaming people-
Yeah, no, I-
-who drive around.
And then, and that is universal, I think, to almost any elementary school.
Some fair TV, too. I should know.
Yeah. So I do think that that is unfortunately an issue that crops up, that is not unique to North Stratfield, but I do know that area, because my son was a counselor there in the summer, and I would drive him, and it is definitely very serpentine, and yeah, no, that is an issue. And I think another thing, too, that I might, that you might want to try, just to kind of get everyone involved in, is that your RTM representatives, you know, can certainly help be a conduit and try to help out, you know, especially when you're talking about this, Mr. Dwyer said, you know, some of the, the road things, those are town issues. So, you know, to kind of get everyone on the same page, it might not hurt to talk to the RTM members in, for your district as well. I actually know one of them, so.
We're bugging her.
Yes, thanks.
Another thought, you know that we do have a police school safety unit?
We, we're, like I said, we're all kind of in the beginning state, I'm the PTA rep for North Stratfield. I came here more as an ECC parent, but the squeaky wheel for us, so I am just in the beginning process of getting all the, we're trying to tangle everyone together, so I thought you guys might have the best.
So there is an officer assigned to each of the middle schools, and therefore watch over the feeder schools to that middle school. And so the head of that, there are officers here in this district, and you probably should get that police officer that's responsible for the North Stratfield that feeds into their middle school, and ask them to advise you on how you might move through the police department to get attention paid to the safety concerns.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Asa?
So as the member of the Transportation Safety Advisor, or whatever it's called, I, so a couple of things. As far as the safety and traffic enforcement, the Fairfield Police Department does have a dedicated traffic safety unit. I have seen emails from parents that have come in to Mr. Fick in transportation, and have been referred to Sergeant Paris of that unit. And they will actually go out and do evaluations, and they will do enforcements, and then they can get involved. So I would say, whether it be through your school resource officer that, you know, oversees your school, or contacting, on the website, there's actually, the Fairfield Police Department website, there's actually a traffic department site, you know, sub-page with information there, so I would recommend that. I echo what Mrs. Gerber said about reaching out to your RTM reps about the road safety and whatnot. Do you have an idea, I mean, you sound like you're pretty organized, of how many people we're talking about?
We, as of last week, this was, we, several of us went to the strategic planning meeting, and a few went thinking that they could fix this at the strategic planning meeting, which wasn't really the case, so a few of us headed up, kind of. It's really 25 families who use those back roads that don't come from Stratfield Road, but come from Putting Green, the back roads, and they want a stop sign put up, and we're kind of running into walls on getting a stop sign.
Okay.
Because there's no way we're going to get sidewalks back there, we're not completely at that level.
Yeah, so I would say, I would follow the procedures for if you do have what you feel is a valid safety concern for which your child is not safe to walk to school, I would start with the transportation department and send an email and see where it goes. And also, like I said, talk to the traffic unit, because they're going to be the ones that can help you, you know, navigate through, like a stop sign, I think would be a police commission-type thing, I could be wrong, but there's lots of different steps and places, but they may be able to help you.
Great, thank you very much.
Mrs. Cannelli?
And just like, the one thing that I would not quite agree with Mr. Dwyer and Mr. Asa on is only that I don't think what you're looking for, and that's sort of how I hear this, is that if you advocate, and if you make a safety case, you can get put on a bus, and I don't think you're advocating to put more kids on buses.
We bought our house because we wanted to be walkers, like-
So it's-
We moved to Fairfield for the community elementary school, so we just wanted to be a safer walk.
And, and I would like more kids walking, you know, so it's, I couldn't agree with you more, and I wish we had the sidewalks, I also wish we could slap some speed bumps up there, and take out some transmissions, and then you won't have to worry about the shaming anymore, because, you know, the person you see picking up the transmission is, that's all you need. Take a few pictures, post it, done. So-
Do a PTA. Do a PTA meeting.
So, you know, and I don't know how to do that, but I would, I completely agree about going through the RTM, that between a stop sign and, I know we've, in the street I live on, we've got people flying through the stop signs, and I mean, I see on the mom's Facebook page, talking about down, down by the beach and that Oldville Road and South Pine Creek, of the people flying through those.
And we understand all those things, I think it's just trying to figure out if there's equity in how things are managed through the town, I guess was our main question. And I don't know if that's true, or if you guys are the people to answer that.
I don't think we're the people, but I do, there are definitely other elementary schools that have safety walking issue, and some of them, it gets that their children are put on buses who, distance-wise, should be walkers, and those are, I think, tighter and even more heavily trafficked roads, but, you know, I would go to the, as I said, I recognize that what you're not advocating for is more people put on buses.
Oh, no, no, no.
We want them walking, we'd like more kids walking, we'd like them to be able to walk safely, and there are definitely things that I wish you luck, and, you know-
We'll be back.
More speed bumps and stop signs, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're about nine forty, so I think we're getting towards the end. Any other comments from the public? Please come forward.
My name's Robert Horn, I'm at 140 Stroll Rock Common. Just wanted to clarify what I think I heard with any future meetings regarding redistricting, is that there will be a meeting or two in February-ish, and then the actual question is, is the goal of that to have a plan to implement when? Or is that known?
Mrs. Vitale?
The plan is not necessarily known, when we're going to have an actual plan and what it's going to look like. I can't give you a date for that. The February meeting is really for the board to get together and kind of take a check of where we are with new information, and discuss how we're going to move forward, and identify mechanisms to engage the public. We have this town hall meeting, we'll be scheduling another one in the spring. We want to bring the community along with us and get community input, and that might be a conversation for the board to have, are there new ways to reach out to people? You know, we have some things in place, but there might be other ways. So I, don't worry, it's not happening in February, and then at the next meeting, there's going to be all of a sudden, you're going to be redistricted. It's the beginning of the process.
Okay. And I'm relatively new to the town. If anybody could let me know, what does redistricting tend to, if it's based, anything based on past model, past experiences, what does it look like? Is it the whole, I mean, is it the whole town, or is it just certain pockets? I have no idea.
Mrs. Gerber?
Sorry, that's a loaded question.
Yes.
Okay, well, one thing that you should understand about Fairfield is that we love to talk about redistricting, and we talk about it all the time.
Since I've been here.
All the time, yes. However, that said, I've had children in the school system since 2003, and in that time, there have been two redistrictings. The first was the year after my oldest started kindergarten. That was a district-wide redistricting, which occurred because a brand-new elementary school, Burr, was built, and a new high school, Ludlow High School, was reopened. So there had to be a redistricting, because there, you had to fill the schools. Before that, there had been a number of other redistrictings that all took place because schools were reopened. In 1997, Osborne Hill School was reopened, they had to redistrict students then. Before that, Mill Hill had been closed, was reopened, they had to redistrict then. The only other redistricting that has taken place since that district-wide soup-to-nuts K-through-12 redistricting that happened in 2003 was in 2011, there was a middle school-only redistricting. And that occurred because significant space was added to Fairfield Woods Middle School. At that time, they had three elementary schools feeding into it. Tomlinson Middle School had four elementary schools feeding into it, and it was bursting at the seams even after it had a major renovation. The Woods project was approved to add significant space, and the Board of Education said, "Okay, well, now we have to fill that space with students," and Tomlinson is bursting at the seams. And what became tricky about that is that the way Fairfield works with their schools, with going into middle school and high school, is that where your child goes to elementary school determines where they go to middle school and where they go to high school. So that way, you are following along with at least one group of students, let's say, a group of, say, sixty students, that you start in kindergarten with, and some will come in and out, but they will follow you all the way through, through 12th grade. And that's the way Fairfield has done it for quite some time. I know other districts don't do it that way, they draw a line, and so if you happen to be the one kid who lives on that other side of that line, you may be going to middle school or high school with no one you went to elementary school with. So I think a lot of people in Fairfield like the idea of having that cocoon where you have your elementary school people. But it became complicated with the middle school redistricting, because we have three middle schools, and we have eleven elementary schools. So there's no easy even way to do it, and unfortunately, we have two middle schools that are half a mile away from each other, and we have one that's on another side of town. So there is no good way to get everyone, and it's, when they started doing it, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I followed it very carefully and closely, every single time they tried to do one, they'd be like, "Well, we're doing that one, but then they're going to be bused really far." Or then the other issue is that they didn't want to have a singleton, which would be one elementary school group going to a middle school, and then going to a different high school with all different people. So they set criteria, which is all very, made sense in many ways, but it really tied their hands, and you ended up with schools like Burr and Stratfield and McKinley traveling past other middle schools to get to Tomlinson. That said, I have spoken to many Stratfield and McKinley parents who before had been at Roger Ludlow Middle School, which was a split middle school, so half the kids went to Ward and half went to Ludlow. The Stratfield and McKinley parents I knew were actually like, you know what, we were going to Roger Ludlow anyway, which is only half a mile away from Tomlinson, and now our kids aren't being split. Everyone they go to middle school with, they're going to high school with. So there are pluses and minuses. So that was the last redistricting that took place, was the middle school redistricting, which did not change where kids went to high school, and it didn't change where they went to elementary school, it simply changed where they went to, it seemed where they went to middle school, but not high school and not elementary school. And since then, we've been talking about it a lot.
Mrs. Canelli?
And one thing I want to add to, so the nature of this one is very, very different, because it's not being driven by exactly a new building. We obviously have Holland Hill, which has now grown in size, Mill Hill yet to be determined what its final size will be. But the one thing I want to add to what Mrs. Vitale said, which is important for the public to know, is that, yes, we're reaching out and getting input, but the goal of this board is also to make a decision, and not for immediate implementation, we don't know that timeline, but we have set a board goal of that at the June 2019, we will have come up with something of a comprehensive nature. So even once you, you know, you give that input at a February meeting, or pay attention to that, and hear this discussion, there's going to be a lot of meat on these bones in terms of what this discussion is. I mean, at some point, we will have listened to the public, and it will be the nine of us needing to come to some conclusions, and ask for what we need from central office for the information to make a decision. We have been nibbling at the edges and using, you know, saying redistricting and other things, but now we have compelling issues that, I don't want to say they're forcing, because I don't think we're unwilling to act when needed, but we're really getting compelling educational issues that are having educational impact. It is our responsibility to address them, so now we have to have it out. So again, this won't just be a listening tour, there will be decisions made for a future with an unknown timeline, but this definitely is not just a February tune-in and you'll get something definitive. It's going to be April, May, June, my, what I'm envisioning, because I-
It's going to be April, May, June, it's going to be, you know, agenda items on regular Board of Ed meetings, it's going to be, this is our goal for, this is our big goal for the year, and a lot of time is going to be put into it.
And that part of the point of those special meetings is because we have a lot of material, I mean, things to do at our regular meetings already, and this is too big a topic to cover entirely at our regular meetings. So it will also be incorporated into those regulars, but we need some of those special meetings, just so we can have a single item focus, because that's how much there is to talk about.
Understood.
Just to emphasize, I think, two points that were made. We need to have our demographer give us some advice, and we can't tell them the scope of their service until we know whether Mill Hill School, what size it's going to be. And in all likelihood, that is not going to be known until May or June of this year. And so that is a complicating factor for this board to put their arms around what should happen from a redistricting point of view, because we really need to know the size of all of our schools in order to give the demographer some guidance.
Okay. Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? As it's nine fifty, seeing none, turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. It was a very, we learned a lot. And please, as Mrs. Gerber said, you can email us at any time, don't feel like this is your one opportunity. Continue to come to our meetings, make public comment, and email us, and we will email you back. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Pierce, for moderating.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Motion to, Mr. Dwyer? Okay, motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you. 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 Thank you.